Good evening and welcome to the April 26th meeting of the Gray Zoning Board of Appeals. Roll call, Anthony.
Here.
Georgia.
Present.
Derek.
Present.
And Mr. Fog Brad is present. First item of business is minutes, approval of minutes of the March 22nd, 2023 meeting, is there a motion?
Georgia Woodbury, I move that we approve the minutes of the March 22nd meeting.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Second was by Derek Shirley. All those in favor? It's unanimous. New business tonight. In our new business tonight, we have two administrative appeals. Now, the purpose of an administrative appeal is to hear and decide where it is alleged there is an error in any order required, decision or determination by the code enforcement officer in the enforcement of the ordinance. The actions of the code enforcement officer may be modified or reversed by the board of appeals by concurring vote of at least three members of the board. And decisions of the code enforcement officer may be reversed only upon a finding that the decision is clearly contrary to the specific provisions of the town's ordinance. Our first hearing is Debbie and Andreas Gatz.
Yes.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I second.
No.
That's close. Fog motions, Shirley seconds. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Who is going to speak for the guests?
I will.
Step up to the microphone, please, state your name, and if there's a sign-in page, the town likes you to sign in.
My name is Debbie Gatz. I am the owner and also will be running the bed and breakfast at 14 Yarmouth Road, the hopeful bed and breakfast.
Debbie, why, tell us why you're appealing.
Our-
Making this appeal.
Our original hope was for us to have five bedrooms that we would rent out at the bed and breakfast, which actually is now changed. We are now requesting four bedrooms. The, under, what we read under the ordinance is that a three-bedroom is allowed in the area, but for anything more, we would have to put in a request. So, we actually kind of want to take back the original appeal of five and ask if we can have four bedrooms that we would rent out. So, the house right now has four bedrooms, and we are in the process of creating a fifth for our private room. We are set up with three bedrooms to start, and with your allowance, would like to incorporate a fourth. The house right now also has, we are in the process, working with the code enforcement officer, the fire chief, to follow all the rules, of course. The nice thing is the house is a clean slate, so everything we are hoping to renovate will be exactly how it's supposed to be, because we can start with a very clean slate. So, the idea is that each room will have its own bathroom to ensure the security for all the guests, that everyone has their own key, own security, own alarm system, own air conditioning, own heating. So, everything can be safely monitored and controlled from us, as well as the guest as well. And then, also, I know the big concern everyone is asking, especially the neighbors, is the parking. So, the nice thing about the property, the snow is gone, and we actually have enough parking that already existed on the property. So, there are two indoor parking spaces, and then there is one to the right of the property that is paved, two to the left of the property that is gravel, that was done by the previous owner. And then, of course, there is the entire driveway, which our hope is not to have the driveway used for parking, for safety reasons, as well as curb appeal, of course. So, in total, there is actually now seven spots available where all vehicles are able to leave without any movement of vehicles or any valets or style parking. We also have, in the parking, we have in our reservation system, a request from guests reserve that they must state the size of their vehicle. So, in the event there is an oversized vehicle, we can react right away, so there's no surprises when the guest would arrive with anything wild that can't fit. I say this, we come from Europe, and that is very important where we're from, because parking is not guaranteed where you go. And we drove a large vehicle there, and we had many problems, so we've learned from that mistake. So, that would be the big part in that. We have spoken with the fire chief, he has been to the house, he has told us what we need to do. We have installed the proper fire alarms and carbon monoxide detectors where he had requested us to. We are just waiting now for the code enforcement officer, the health inspector, as well as the plumber to go through all the inspections of the work we've done. Everything is still open and still able to be changed, if it needs to be. As for meals, we understand that the only allowance for us is to offer breakfast, so our kitchen would be just an average home kitchen where we'd offer breakfast for the guests. However, we have set up some local partnerships within Gray and outside of Gray with local businesses where we would promote add-on features to the reservation where guests will get gift cards to occupy the local businesses. For example, Birchwood Brewing, I'm sure everyone's familiar with it. They have a promotion that's going to go on with us so that the guests actually kind of also stay in Gray and use what is here, as opposed to leaving. And we're in the process of hoping to work with the local flower shop so that guests can add on these features if they're having a romantic, you know, getaway, that we can actually have all these things used here. And we are in the process of working with local farms that we are hoping to use solely local products for our breakfast and also promote all of this on our website. Our website is live as of this morning, so you're all able to see it as well.
It's already live?
Mm-hmm. Just so that it's, well, live, I say, so none of the booking agents are active, because we have to verify them, and I waited with that, of course, until today. It's live more so that everyone can go on and see, because I did write the partnerships, I wrote about the community of Gray, as well as that there is the facelift that is coming that we approve of. We wrote in there, because we spoke with Doug Webster about the drive, sorry, sidewalk that was hoping, which we obviously encourage, because foot traffic there would be great for us to be able to walk to places, as opposed to having to drive. So, we just kind of put that on there, so in the event anybody wanted to go on today to go and see, but it is not active in a Google search, not yet, because it's not verified.
Thank you. Does anybody of the, on the board have questions they'd like to ask?
I have a question.
Georgia?
Georgia Woodbury. In your original, you had mentioned an office for your landscaping business.
Yes.
Is that still going to be there?
Well, yes and no, I have to be honest. So, my husband is the landscaper, I am obviously more of the office type. So, for me, I'm thinking it needs an office, obviously it doesn't. So, we, it's our house, we are there. The laptop he's going to be using to send out invoices will be in our house, yes. But it doesn't actually, I mean, the business itself is, of course, our home business, because the business we have is Gatz LLC, which is an umbrella business. So, the bed and breakfast, as well as the landscaping company, are all under the Gatz LLC, which also means all our taxes and everything will be done with that address. But it's not going to be an active office space. We also don't really have foot traffic for an office space.
Right.
So, I apologize, I did write that in there, because my mindset of what actually needed to be for an office is not-
So, are you going to be living there now?
We are going to be living there, yes, but we do also have a property, a farm in Raymond. So, we will be going back and forth. So, when there is no guests, we will also be living on our farm.
Thank you.
Derek?
I'm going to follow up to Georgia's question about the landscaping business. Will you be holding any sort of building or landscaping equipment at this address?
No, that's also why we have the farm. We moved originally, yes, but then we were told by the code enforcement officer that that's actually not okay, which is absolutely no problem, because it worked out in our benefit where we were able to get an old indoor arena, and everything is out there now.
Follow-up chair?
Yes.
Now, this is another question, not related to what I just asked. So, just to really clarify, to me, there's now not a need for a parking lot in the back? Is that my understanding? Because before, there possibly was, and now we're saying we, you guys found that there is enough parking that you won't have to do any sort of adjustments?
We don't have to make any adjustments.
Okay. And then, adding on to that, like you said, when it snows, it's covered. Do you have a plan to make sure they're, move the snow prop? I mean, I guess you're married to a landscaper, so.
I was going to say, the plan is right there.
So, I guess I get some more on that question there. So, okay.
Yeah, we just, we couldn't do any-
Brought that one out myself.
Sorry, I know, we couldn't do any clearing this winter, because we didn't know what was under the snow. We had purchased the property, actually, we did see it, yes, but we were out of the country for most of the winter. So, by the time we got here, we just played it safe and just did one straight line.
We made the driveway and the mailbox, and just thought we, I don't kind of go with the machinery in there, just in case I hit something that is covered or whatever.
Yeah.
Other questions? Anybody? I have a question. With regards to the fifth bedroom.
Yes.
You stated that when there are guests, one of you would be living there or staying there.
Mm-hmm.
Is there also the possibility that if one of you can't, that you mentioned two full-time employees? Would one of those employees be a representative of your LLC that would be staying there?
So, that is the goal, as part of our visa requirements to live here in the state of Maine. We have to employ two full-time staff within the next four years. That is also the reason for the bed and breakfast, because the idea is that it will be employees that actually run it, that I am just doing the office, the background, and then we would set up a representative to live there if that was, at that time, possible, at the moment, we need somewhere to live to.
So, let me clarify. Four bedrooms, each one with a private facility?
Mm-hmm.
For, and the common kitchen, or the common kitchen and dining area? So, there are four bedrooms or five bedrooms and a dining area?
There's two dining areas, actually.
Okay.
Plus a living room and the kitchen. It's very, it's, yeah, it worked out really well with the setup.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? Would you step up, please, to the podium and state your name?
Yes, hi, my name is Jeff Bagden. I live at 14 Yarmouth, 16 Yarmouth Road. Obviously, my property completely abuts this property. We've owned our home since 2014. I've never cared to know exactly where the property line is, but having this move-in next door, I would like to know exactly where our property line is so that we understand what's happening between the two properties. Because it's pretty close there, or fairly close. Just for my own, for me and my wife, we were fine with the bed and breakfast idea next door. We don't have a problem with it, it's just for us, we'd like to know, okay, here's exactly where the property line is, and I figure this is my one shot to get that. So, I'd like to have that defined.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Debbie, is there a, on your deed, on your mortgage deed, was a survey completed at the time of the property was purchased?
So, there's, this is where we were having also a little bit of an issue, and we would also like the clarification, because we've received three different versions of the property line. Now, the line is very, very small difference. Regardless, we would like to know what the actual set line is, because what we received at the time of purchase, then what we received when we were looking into what we can do with the garden, because we would like to make the garden a little nicer and improve the curb appeal on the front of the house. We received another version, and it's literally, I mean, it's a difference of inches between the two lines that we saw, but we don't know which one's the accurate one. So, if there's any way that we can get that clarified for both of us, that would be wonderful.
I hate, I hate to offer up that's, you know, owner responsibility, that you're probably going to have to pay for a survey based on the mortgage deed or whoever is holding the deed or the mortgage.
Mm-hmm.
You might, you might want to ask them, is we need an accurate survey of the property lines?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. We have received also, whenever there was the request for the sidewalk being put in, another version again, so.
Whatever might happen is, I would offer up as a condition-
Yes.
-to any variance that might be given, that a copy of a certified survey be given to your neighbor so that the property line is well-established.
Okay, yeah.
And if it's inches or, I don't see a problem, I don't personally see a problem there, but it's not my decision. But you need to, if this is approved, make sure that your neighbor gets a copy.
Yes.
And we would make that as a condition-
Okay.
-of any approval.
Absolutely.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I, I do. Maybe it's a general question. I just want to make sure that, so we're, we're not, you're not going to be living on the site 20, 24 hours a day, right?
It's a bit of a, well, I say, I will say, yes, momentarily, yes. But once the renovations are complete, sorry, we can't live there now, because it's not built, the inside. But then, the plan is to, after that, yes, until we have staff, and then hoping that we can also spend our time back and forth between the farm. So, that goal is, in the end, that we can kind of work together. If it's not possible, we're also very flexible. I mean, it's, for us, both options are great. We're fortunate enough to have the two options.
Georgia, you have a question?
No, I'm just, because it does say that you need to live in, in the building.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Any other comments from the public? Would you have a seat? If we have another question, we'll pop one of you right up here.
Okay, may I, sorry, may I just quickly ask, when you say about living there, does that mean, like, because we have all of our equipment and everything up at the farm, that's not what we're talking about, it's just whether or not we, just because we set up our everything out there, I want to make sure we're not required to move all the landscaping stuff back down?
No.
Okay, that's good, okay.
I think what's going on is the sticking point is the ordinance reads that the bed and breakfast must be owner-occupied.
Mm-hmm. Which it will be. And if we need to keep it that way, we can do it that way if it's not allowed to have the staff in the event, but like I said, we have four years to have the staff. We definitely do not plan on having staff for the first year and a half, because, well, we need to first make some money, and then, after that, we're more than willing to be flexible about it. Thank you.
Okay, discussion? Or let's, let's make a motion first. Is there a motion?
I lost my, yes.
Bear with me for a second.
Mm-hmm.
I would make the motion that Debbie and Andreas Gatz be granted an administrative appeal regarding a proposed four-bedroom short-term lodging facility. The definition of a bedroom and breakfast in section 402.2.2 establishes a three-bedroom. I don't want, let me avoid that all, I need to think about this for a minute. The conflict here is that the town's ordinance, ordinances, have two different definitions. They have the bed and breakfast ordinance, which says, three bedrooms, limit of three bedrooms, owner occupied. And then it goes to the hotel motel ordinance, which says, literally speaking, it says, more than five bedrooms. So, bedrooms four and five are hanging out there in the wind, and there is no ordinance covering a structure with four or five bedrooms. Now, the zoning board has the authority under the ordinance to make adjustments in unusual circumstances. And I think that's what we're looking at here, is an unusual circumstance in this appeal. So, I bet some- So, looking at this appeal and how the zoning board of appeals and the planning board work in joint consideration of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does include trying to have businesses that focus on moving people safely about, through Gray and getting around town via walking, biking, cat, or public transportation. They want to maintain the rural character of the resources. They want to invest in the village and the community programs. They want to strengthen community connections through townwide events, things like that. They want to promote an economic climate that increases job opportunities, which this bed and breakfast will eventually do, according to the applicants. They want to support some type of economic development activity, which the bed and breakfast conceivably could do in this atmosphere. They want to create a stay in the community while aging atmosphere. I'm not sure a bed and breakfast would do that, but, again, aging people might want to visit town. They want to support the level of financial commitment that people make in the town, and they're trying to improve the infrastructure under the comprehensive plan. So, I am in favor of, how do I, now, how do I word this? And Matt's going to listen to me carefully here and give me guidance and direction if I need it. I make the motion that Debbie and Andreas Gatz be granted an administrative appeal to establish a four-bedroom bed and breakfast in the town of Gray, which will provide four individual facilities for each of the four rooms and be in compliance with all other applicable public safety codes. And that they provide a copy of the land survey to their neighbors upon request. And further that the facility will be owner-occupied and in the future allow for an owner representative in lieu of owner occupation. Is there a second?
I second the motion, Georgia Woodbury.
Sorry, I thought we, the condition of, for the, a buddy neighbor for the-
I put that-
Oh, did you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that one.
They're providing a copy of the survey upon-
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, I missed it, I was listening.
So, the onus is to grant the appeal.
Okay.
Four-room, four guest room, each with a separate facility, one owner occupied, owner rep room, and one survey deed.
Okay.
And meet all other applicable town codes for public and public safety.
How about having them commit to a number of parking lots, or parking spots? She's saying seven total right now. We don't want, we don't want that to change over time. Or if it is going to change, we want to have it. The parking is going to be a problem.
Because you can't park on the street.
The snow will come back. The snow can be removed.
Okay, so, is there a second?
I, I-
Okay, there's a second. Discussion. Deb or Andreas, or Debbie or Andreas? Step up, please, again to the podium. How many current parking spots are there?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, and that's five outside and two in the garage?
Yes.
Is that a number that will be maintained?
Yes.
If anything, less. But we don't need more, we don't have, the rooms are not very vaguely, it's not, we can't have, and we also were told, I forgot to mention, by the fire chief, that we have a maximum of 10 guests before the rules change when it comes to fire, like, if we need a sprinkler system, we don't have more space to that, and we also have a private life, we don't want more people than that.
It's also all plowable or cleanable.
Yeah.
We just didn't do that, because we arrived and it was like five inches of snow, so we didn't know, or I didn't know where I'm going. So, I just did the driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, but it won't be more, definitely not more.
Thank you. George, Mr. Frelick?
Sir, Mr. Fog, with due respect to the planning board.
Need to step up to the podium, please.
Yes, sir. Parking comes under the guideline of planning board, and so those dimensions aren't, aren't, they're not dimensional requirements in the, in the code enforcement slash ZVA authority. They would be, those would be dictated by the planning board. So, any, any parking would have to go to the planning board.
Any additional parking?
Yes.
Okay.
The parking for the use would go to the planning board.
The parking spots they have now has to go to the planning board?
I would ask Doug to elaborate on that a little bit, because he is more involved with the planning board than myself.
Thank you.
Doug Webster, planning director. The parking standard is required in the body of the zoning ordinance. The actual standard is contained in Article 10. That's where the specific number of parking spaces are detailed for the, for the respective use. Looking at the agenda for the board of appeals tonight, it's talking about whether or not the board of appeals wishes to overturn the administrative appeal. In addition, the zoning board of, the zoning board of appeals authority is limited to dimensional standards. Parking is not a dimensional standard. Parking is, is within the autonomy of the planning board as an integral part of the site plan review process.
Okay, can I ask a question? Absolutely.
So, just so I'm clear, so we can't cap the parking space, that's not really our authority?
That's correct.
Gotcha. 10-4?
It's not a dimensional standard.
Gotcha.
So, we don't, I don't need to make any other changes in my motion? Because I didn't address parking at all?
Yep, I, I think the parking is-
It is what it is.
-is within the autonomy of the planning board when it presumably goes to planning board, either for conditional or site plan, whatever use it goes for.
Okay. Yep. So, we're going to leave parking alone, because the fire chief has also indicated that for additional changes, then parking would have to be addressed? Okay.
Yeah, which he, he let us know, but like I said, we don't need more.
Okay. Any other questions? Any comments from the public, any additional comments from the public? Seeing not all those in favor of the motion to grant the appeal as stipulated. The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much, somebody will be sending you a notice within the next seven days from planning, from the town office. Make sure you follow up and do all the right things, so you can get this business on the road.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Okay, let me find my, can I have my notes here again? Here we go. Here we go. An extra order of business is a hearing for Randall Whitney and James McKinnon, who have filed an administrative appeal of a notice of violation regarding prohibiting a construction services use as established in the Town of Gray zoning ordinance, Chapter 402, which I quote, "Construction services using such as plumbing, painting, building, well drilling, carpentry, or electrical installation, and excavating on their property in a medium-density zoning district." At 30, is it 309 or 409?
309.
309 Portland Road, tax map 069-041-029-001. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
I, Georgia Woodbury, I move that we open the hearing on 309 Portland Road Administrative Appeal.
Is there a second? Anthony. His first official act. Who is representing the
Whitneys?
Whitneys and McKinnons.
You distracted me with all the dashes and letters and numbers.
Really?
I'm gonna step away from the squirrel moment, and my name is Mike Batlincourt. I'm with the law firm of Ainsworth, Thielen, and Raffus. I'm representing Randy. I've known Randy for a long time, known his family for a long time, done a lot of work with his family. So I am here, but I will warn you that this is the Mike and Randy Show. So he knows the business, he knows, he knows what, what's going on with his property. And so I will rely on him to answer any questions we might need to answer as we, as we proceed to this, but I will, I'll take, I'll take the lead on the presentation, for better or worse.
Okay.
Okay, good. The board has our submission on this, and I'll run through the basics. This is, of course, the medium-density zoning district, as we all know. Randy and Jamie reside at 309 with their children, and there are a lot of them. And I have toured the property. And there's a lot of recreating going on, I, I have to say, in, in a good way. The extent that it's a beautiful, big lot that they have there, it's, it's, they built a great home. They've built, built a couple of, of, of great garages and buildings there. And there is golfing going on, and snowmobile storage, and, and a lot of stuff that you would anticipate if you're, you know, kind of building out your, your dream home in, in Gray. And that's, that's what I saw from my tour. Now, is there also, you know, Randy at the same time does, does run a business. He does not run a business out of that particular spot, because he doesn't have to, because he goes everywhere else for his business. And so that's where, obviously, that's the crux of the discussion and, and the concern here. I want to continue on with my presentation, but I also want to be really crystal clear that I don't see anybody here, and I'm, I have not heard from anybody, who has any problem with what Randy, what his family do at his property. He, he, and, and I will say as well, I'm gonna be really upfront and open about this. There were words exchanged when he got a notice of violation about this. And I'm not gonna comment on the, on the wisdom of all of that, but I will say that it was because he felt as though basically folks were questioning his ability to, to earn his livelihood and take care of his family in a scenario where that should not have been questioned. I grew up in Otis Field, just, just fifteen miles up the way. If I told my father that he can't park his work truck on his property, he'd probably never talk to me again. That would be it. By Mike, this is, this just does not fly, so I don't, I don't want to turn this into a personal thing, and that's not my...
Good, let's not do that.
No, let's, let's...
Let's stick to the appeal itself, the nature of the appeal.
We will, we...
Why you want it overturned.
We will stick to that, exactly.
Keep all types of personalities and personal comments out of it.
No, no, exactly.
Yeah, honestly, I, I, let's cut to the chase. Like honestly, I feel like I'm talking to a lawyer right now. It's like, let's cut to the chase. You don't have to whine.
Well, you're gonna talk to, well, please, no, because you're gonna talk to a bunch of lawyers.
Sir.
Because you're paying for a number.
Please. Let's just stick to the facts. Please state your, your...
I will do that.
Alls we want you to do, and, and, and the appellate's are to state the case as to why you feel the violation was issued incorrectly.
Yes, and, and I will, I will do that. I will do that. We'll get, we'll get, we'll get right to that. So as I said, we're talking about personal storage primarily. We're talking about snowmobile storage. Randy's kid playing golf i- in the, in one of the garages, and I've seen it. It happens. I've seen, I've seen what he's doing there. We are talking about ATV storage. We are admittedly talking about some business vehicles on the property. That happens. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to cover that up. I'm not gonna go all lawyer on that. I'm, I want to be frank and open and honest about, about those sorts of things, but we are talking about two Peterbilt trucks that come in and out of that property periodically, which are basically commuter vehicles for Randy and for his brother. His father, who is part-time, very part-time at this point, and his cousin. This is not a big operation. There is, there is a business across the street. That's not a concern for anybody. That's fine. But I, we feel as though we're being picked upon when there just is, is no real reason for it, so I, I'll, I'll keep, I'll keep hitting the points, because I understand that, you know, I don't want to rub anybody the wrong way here. I will say that there, there's zero construction services at this address. So that's, that's really what we get down to, right, as we get to the construction services definition. No construction services at this address. None. Nothing. They run a concrete business where they go everywhere else, and never, never at their property. Zero signage, other than what may or may not be on the side of the Peterbilt truck. I think it says Randy Concrete, right? Well-maintained residential property on a large lot on Route 100, rolling right through downtown Gray. And I do want to comment the photos that were submitted with some of the material that you folks received, and we can look at those specifically. Those were, as you'll see, and I'll, I'll see if I can find the specific page references for you to make this, everybody gets looking at the same thing at the same time. Yeah, so it's page eighteen, nineteen. I think those are the primary pages where you see some vehicles out there. You see their vehicles with, I, I think it's with some forms loaded up. And you'll see in the, in the middle part of that that one of those, one of their, one of the, one of Randy's garages is under construction. And that's one of those points where, and I just went through this myself, up in Harrison. You know, you're in the midst of construction, and everything has to kind of live outside for a little while. And so that's what, that's what was happening at that given point in time. Apparently, they were under surveillance. And so that got picked up upon, but if you, if you roll through there at, at any other given time, at any, other than this given moment, those garages are completed, cleaned up, and everything is, is very, you know, neat and tidied. And I do want to reference Jensen Baird in, in their submission, the town attorney, included a, a case, included reference to home occupation, and I think that was a, a point that was, that was well made within their submission, because we can, and I, I talked about, I talked about in my submission, the fact that you should be able to have a couple of your work trucks in your own yard. That should not be a problem. And I, I'll go off on a tangent with that again, because in, in my real estate, in my, in my permit, permitting practice, I deal quite frequently with, with deed-restricted lots. So if we're living in, in, in Cape Elizabeth somewhere, and, and the deed says you can't keep a commercial vehicle there, all right, that's fine. You get that. But this is, we're in a town, we're in a, this is a home rule, property rights town, where if you get a couple of your own vehicles, where you're making a living with your father, and your brother, and your cousin, and it's a business that, that your father was running for years before, you should be able to do that. This should not be a problem. And nobody's whining and complaining about it, other than apparently the town. Again, I'll, I'll get back on track here, and I'll wrap things up quickly, because I know you guys only want to spend so much, so much time with me. Let me, let me see where I, where, where I left off there. Make sure I can, I can get back on track. Again, the, the photos were taken during construction. It is a clean site. It's a wonderful property. It's a big property. It has beautiful residents on it. Great, you know, completely well-maintained buildings. I know where I was. I, I was at the, the home occupation standard, which is something that I did not reference in my, in my submission, but, you know, it was well-taken from what Jensen Baird said, and it caused me to look back at that.
Jim is not from Jensen Baird. He's representing the zoning board.
Well, no, I know, but yeah, there's, you're paying for a suit over here somewhere else from Jensen Baird.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, and I will say, there are a lot of attorneys being paid right here who should not be paid. I'm, I'm not happy to be here about this right now. Obviously, you're not happy to...
Oh, I'm, I lo, I just can't wait to ask you questions. So I'm, I'm actually pumped to be here.
No, no, it's, it's, I know, I know, I, but I'm, I'm just saying, this is nothing, this, this is the kind of thing, I think, I, my client should be able to, to do what he wants to do right now, because I don't think he's doing any harm. But that being said, on, on the, on the, on the home occupation standard, because again, I'm trying to stay on point here, stay on topic. You know, I think that's a very, I, I think that's a, you know, a fair fair point for us to consider as we look at this, because as I've talked to Randy, and as I've talked to his father, I think this, this does, this would fit into that definition as well. We're talking about just a small family owned, I see a lot of smirks going on, I maybe just missed something here, but we, we, we're talking about a small, family-owned business that is not causing any problems with any neighbors, with anybody else. And I, I'm getting the sense I've been talking too long, so I'm gonna shut up, and y'all can ask me questions, and we'll, we'll take them there.
Does anybody have any questions of...
Well, and, and if you, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna check with Randy, and he can tell me...
I, I forgot your last name.
It's Mike Batlincourt. You just called me Mike, and you can tell me what I've missed, and that may have a hundred questions.
Thank you.
I have some questions.
How we doing?
Not too bad. Would you introduce yourself? I don't know you.
I'm Randy Whitney.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
I won't talk as much as Mike.
Yes.
Nah, you know...
He, he's, he's up here to tell me to shut up.
I know, I know, I know. Chair, may I, may I ask some questions now?
We'll see what they want.
We're gonna wait until it's done.
No, no, go, go for it.
Okay. So first off, I want to say, there's probably no one in this room that hates more than government and town overreaching this guy. Hate it with a burning passion. Actually, fight it in the State House myself. Hate it. So I want to go back to your point here, right? Let's look at your definition that you're concerned about. The definition of construction service. Let's look at the first two words, or three words, uses such as. In your legal def, in your legal, your legal opinion, how would you define the term such as? Would that be including or limited to? When some, when, when it says such as, does that mean those exact things, or is it up to a variable, variable thing?
I think, I think it's variable.
Okay, so, so it's possible that concrete would or could fall under this, right? Because it says such as in our ordinance. But you, you hear what I'm saying?
I, I agree entirely that, that, that concrete would fall under that definition if, if concrete work was happening on that site, and it is not.
But if I go on Google Earth or Google Maps right now, this very second, I see a cement truck in their driveway. Right now, if you Google Earth, their property, at this very second, you do.
No, you don't.
You do.
There's no concrete trucks there. They're just form trucks.
So no concrete, that's not concrete work, though?
No, it's concrete work, but they're not concrete, like, truck, like, they're talking like one with the mixer drum?
There, there's no, there's no concrete work going on there. Randy and his father, and his cousin, and his brother are rolling through there and driving their vehicles to and from their jobs in Scarborough, Rockland, everywhere else. It is not a construction services site. That's my, that, that's my point.
But, but, but the question isn't, the question isn't if, if, if it's a site or not. The question is
I know the question.
The definition of construction services. And my question was, when I say uses such as, do you think it's including concrete work? And you're saying yes, right?
I told you, yes, but they're not doing concrete work.
That's my question. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions at the moment? Randy, you want to say something before I ask a question, or?
Sure, why not? I mean, I've lived in this town for almost forty years, and my whole life, we've had concrete forms at our house. That's just how it's always been. My dad lived in this town for sixty years, and we've grown up with forms at our house. You know what I mean? So I don't know any different. That's just what we always done. You know, and when I, I've done plenty of things for the town. I did a town dump, I did the town library. This very office contacted me to do the concrete work for the new town park out here, and I did the concrete work out here. Those sheds you see outside, I did that concrete work. And after the town contacted me to do those, they were like, Randy, thanks for doing that work. Move all your stuff out of your house. That didn't happen for many a years that I did those things. And then I built a garage, and now it seems like I'm classified in the same category as I have a crack house. You know, like, you need to leave. Move those things. I, this is what I've always done. You know, like, why is it a problem now that I build a garage and everybody wants me to move my stuff? You know?
Yeah, our, our only point...
Hold on, Derek's gonna say something.
Question, can I ask another question, Chair?
Yes.
Uh, so I think to help you answer that, I think when we look at, I don't know, I don't know what page or article we have here, one of your applications, and it says for personal use only. So...
Like I wrote that?
No, 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 like, this is, I don't know, this is what I'm given. It says personal use only, plan, uh, plan regis, plan required to run business out of this site.
Is it, is that...
Site plan? Is that what you said?
Building permit application.
Yeah, it's a building permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, this is what I'm saying, like I...
There's something issued by the town.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, yeah. So I had these forms on the site, and then once I built the garage, it just kind of exploded, you know?
And I think when I was reading over this, you know, I, I got that about you, just reading your stuff. You know, you, you live here, man. This is your shit. I mean, your stuff. You know what I mean? I feel that. So my thing is just like, I, for me, because, you know, like, again, man, I'm all, I hate all this, really. But I think the fact of the matter is, not literally, but it just comes off as super sketchy, just being straight up, because yeah, because it's like personal use, like, there's applications that were for personal stuff, you know what I mean? And now that I'm seeing, like, pictures of business stuff, and I get it. My dad's a mechanic. My dad has his own shop. I'm all for family businesses, man. Like, you have me. Like, I, I'm, I want to do, I I'm trying to figure out a way how it doesn't look... My, let me ask, actually, ask a question, sorry. So, is it possible, was it possible for possibly to rezone your district to make this possible?
Is it possible for me to do it?
What, was it? Yes.
Let, let me answer that. Rezoning is, is always an option. I mean, that is, but it's, it's burdensome. It's difficult, and in this scenario, it's unnecessary. Again, we're talking about a very...
I don't, I don't know if it was, I didn't approach anybody to try to rezone the property.
Is that because you just didn't know, or it just, you just figured personal use, or what, like, what, what was the reasoning? Because I feel like, as a business owner, I've been here, I feel like that's step one, right? If you're like, oh, shoot, I'm gonna build something, I feel like, even I know that, I'm kind of a dingaling, and I don't have any businesses. You know, I'm gonna say, oh, shoot, should, am I even allowed to do that? You know what I mean? So it's like, I, because you seem, like you said, you, you guys been in business for how long? Sixty-five years? So like, why, why isn't that we didn't know to use, look?
He had a building permit for the buildings.
Well, I'm not asking about the permit.
Okay, well, Derek, we need...
I'm asking for the reason, why didn't we go to... I'm asking for the reason, why didn't we go to rezoning first?
Derek, we need, we need to refocus on.
Okay, now I'm off, now I'm off topic, so, add me.
We need to refocus on whether or not this is a violation.
Okay.
I was saying, like, the forms were on the property, and then I built a garage, and that's when it all kind of came about.
Okay.
So, it's not like I was, you know, I was already doing it before, and then I built a garage, and the town has a problem with the business.
Okay, I'd like to ask a follow-up question, uh, where Mr. Valancourt raised the issue about paving company, I think it was. Did you raise the issue of the paving company on the material that Jensen Baird supplied?
Yeah, the.
The one that was sent to us?
The one that was in here, yes.
From the, yeah.
I guess my compet-, my question is a comparison question. If at the time, and I, I will tell you openly that I sat on that zoning board for the P and B paving issue, uh, what, nine years ago now? Something like seven and six, yeah, nine years ago. My question would be a similar one. If they were found in violation, which they were, and the court upheld the town's position. Owner occupied business. They were not paving anything on the property where they were storing the materials, how is that different? From what's going on with the concrete business, where they're not concreting, making concrete, or pouring concrete there? But as in the paving company, they're going off-site, getting in materials, and doing the paving work somewhere else. Similar to what I'm hearing, that you folks are taking your trucks and your materials and all the equipment you need to pour a foundation, or pour a patio, or pour something somewhere. How is that different?
They had a lot more going on, and they were raising a ruckus. And that's why neighbors complained, and that's why it even ended up in front of you folks. It was different in that regard, it was different in nature, and scope, and duration. And it resulted in, in a neighbor, you know, probably rightfully so, you know?
I don't, I don't disagree with that, like. That's what we do, we get up in the morning, we get in the trucks, we leave, we probably do the same things the paving company does too.
Okay.
You know, I'm not saying that's any different, I'm just saying, I've already been, you know, we've been doing it. It's just because we built, I mean, it just seems like it's a problem since I built the garage, you know, I just. That's all, and most of the, I'd say, you know, fifty percent of most of the garages are, at least, or more, are personal use, are personal use. You know, one of the garages has a golf simulator, you know, it's not like I'm doing, I'm storing stuff in that part, you know? They're outside, it's concrete forms. I just, I'm not trying to hurt anybody. I'm not trying to cause a problem, I can't imagine anybody's complaining about it, there's a giant business across the street with thirty cars in and out. Have you guys ever been, you guys all live in Gray?
Let's refrain, let's refrain from.
Have you ever been by the property?
Let's refrain from the business across the street.
I know, I'm just saying, it's not like it's.
And they're trafficking it out.
No, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not saying it's like, because it's, there's a residential house there, and I'm not making noise and causing a problem.
The point is that it's all in complete conformance and character with, with everything else that is going on, and is not a, a primary business situation. And nobody is complaining about it, and there, there are really no problems there. I've done, I've done a lot of this work.
Oh, no, continue.
Yeah, yeah, give me permission.
Oh, no, no, go for it, go for it.
I want you to finish your thought.
Yeah, I, I've done a lot of this work, and I've never spent a lot, I've never spent any time in front of a board where there are a bunch of attorneys being paid, where nobody has a, has a problem with the situation. But I understand there's stand-, there are standards, and I, and I get that completely, and I, I know you guys have to uphold those standards. So, I'm gonna stop talking and, and go for the question.
Derek.
First off, I just want to say the lawyer's probably here because of me too, you know, you never know with me. Um, so, second off, um, I just want to say, or just real, real, and ask. If no one's out to, you know, no one's mad at y'all, how did we get here?
I just sold the garage, when they, I built the garage.
And then, then the town just came over and started surveilling your property?
I'm gonna ask the town that.
No, I mean, they, they already came on the property, they saw the forms when I was building the garage. So, like, because they have to do an inspection on the garage, so when they come and inspect the garage, you see the forms are already there, you know?
Gotcha, I feel, yeah.
So, that's how it raised the issue that I have forms on the property.
But they did, the photos were from a, a town.
No, because that's one thing I did have, even, even look, reading over this, reading over this, I do have my own personal, uh, opinions when it comes to certain things, and that's also a little, doesn't taste good in my mouth either, so.
What's that?
Just take me pictures of your private property.
Derek.
Oh.
I'm allowed to speak.
Easy.
No, I mean, I'm allowed to speak, so. Um, so, that, that's my, that's where I'm standing at right now, but I'm definitely open to some conversations.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for the appellate?
No, not right this moment.
Uh, Jim, do you have a comment you want to make, or?
If I may, uh, first off, just so everybody knows what the roles are here. My name is Jim Katsifakis, I'm an attorney from Perkins Thompson. I'm outside counsel to this board tonight, because Jensen Baird, the town attorney, is representing the code office. I want to make sure that you have impartial advice, no one can claim that there's any conflict of interest, or any, any kind of due process violation. So, that's, that's why I'm here, it's not, we're trying to have the Lawyers Full Employment Act of two thousand twenty-three here. So, one point was made, and this is for clarification for the board. The issue here, the central issue here is whether or not the appellate is running construction services on this property, where construction services aren't zoned, aren't a permitted use in that zone. I think that's what we agree the issue is, okay? So, when you take a look at the definition of construction services, uses such as plumbing, painting, building, well drilling, carpentry, or electrical installation, and excavating. The appellate is making the point that it couldn't possi-, ex-, had the foundation work, concrete work, couldn't possibly be a construction service in violation of the ordinance, because it's all done off-site. All of these are done typically off-site, unless the contractor's doing his own or her own work. You know, plumbing is generally done somewhere else. Painting is generally done somewhere else, building, well drilling, carpentry, it's done off-site, the job site is someplace else. And so, you, you don't look at the job site and say, is the construction service permitted there? It's more like, is the house that you're building, painting, plumbing, allowed in that district? So, I'm just trying to, if you were to read construction services in that manner, you might be right, just reading that whole definition and that whole placement in the zoning ordinance, out of the zoning ordinance, because where would it be? If it's not where the contractor is, and it certainly wouldn't make sense to say it's where the job's being done, then where are construction services located? Why do you have it listed in your ordinance? So, just.
Thank you.
Point of clarification.
I will say, hold on.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
Hold on.
My show.
I will say it when.
My show.
Yeah, yeah, he does run the show.
My show. I would hope that those are points that the town's representative would point out to us, as opposed to you having to defend yourself some comments that, that Jim just made. I think he's perfectly entitled to make the board aware of our reinforced, what I stated earlier, that we're only looking at the violation. Is it applicable, or is it not? Will we uphold the town's position, or will we overturn the town's position? So, I don't want us to get into an arguing match over that.
I don't, I don't want to, I didn't want to bring any lawyers involved anyways, I just, it's just how it worked out, I'm sorry about that. But I will say that, when I, the code enforcement officer was at my property, and I gave him examples of the construction services that were listed, you know, not supposed to bring up other people, but that were happening in the town, he told me mine was different. And I asked him why, I just, you know, if mine's different from the other people across the town that are, you know, doing the same kind of things in the same zones, and he's telling me mine's different, then obviously, to me, I'm just a dumb concrete guy. If he's telling me the things that are listed, and I gave him the examples of the things that are listed on the ordinance, and he says mine's different.
So, I, I would just, I would just say, we, we would disagree with Jim's characterization of that, but, but you are running the show, and you tell us when you want to hear anything further from us.
I think, I think, Randy, that's certainly a question that you could direct through the chair, uh, when the town's great representative speaks, that if you want to reiterate that question at that point in time, I would be more than happy to ask the town how they came to the arrival of a violation. Okay?
Okay.
Anything else right now?
Like us to stand down?
You can if you want to.
We will.
Okay.
Do that, you know, you know where to find us.
Right, well, as Bob Uke would say, right in the front row.
Yeah, yes. Tha-, tha-, thank you all for hearing us out, yep.
And representing the town of Gray in this matter?
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Ben McCall, I'm an attorney at Jensen Baird in Portland. Uh, and as Attorney Katsifakis already raised, I'm here representing the code officer. Uh, and I'm happy, I, I've got a couple of points that I want to make, they were previously, um, submitted in our letter of April twenty-first. But a couple of points, I think, that were brought up, um, in Attorney Valancourt's presentation, that I think is probably just worth starting with. First of all, um, you as a board here tonight are not here to determine whether any neighbors are complaining about a particular use. And frankly, that's not part of the decision-making process that goes into determining whether any property owner or any activity, uh, participant in Gray is in violation of the ordinance. Instead, um, the job of the code enforcement officer, uh, which has been done here, is, um, to inspect certain situations, certain buildings across town, in a whole variety of circumstances. Uh, apply your zoning ordinance to that situation, and determine whether what's happening is in compliance with that. Sometimes it is true that those situations are brought to the town's attention by neighbor complaints. Um, but in this case, um, the code officer had a number of opportunities to, to inspect the property as part of the two, um, large garages that were built there. And as you can see from those pictures, those were taken from, um, from Route one hundred. That happens in, uh, very many situations across the town of Gray, across municipalities, across the state. That's how code enforcement is typically done, with these types of drive-by inspections. Um, and so, that was the process that happened here, and I think it's important to point that out at the beginning. Your job as a board tonight is not to determine whether anybody is here complaining necessarily. It's to determine whether the code officer made the correct decision, and we think, uh, certainly that the code officer did. So, there are a couple of points on, on the actual, um, meat of, of the issue that I want to point out. The first is, and I agree with Attorney Katsifakis on this, that the scope of this appeal is really to determine whether what is happening at three oh nine Portland Road constitutes construction services. Um, and as I outlined in our letter, it's certainly the town's position that construction services goes far outside the scope of, of what the appellate is, is contending. This is not a question of whether somebody is pouring concrete on a particular property, whether they're building a structure. There are other permitting procedures through the town, building permits typically, um, that would account for that. The question is whether, uh, one of the uses of that property is for, um, providing construction services. And a- as, as you dealt with in the Bell case that we referenced, um, that can mean a whole variety of things. And in this case, it's the storage of work trucks, it's the storage of work materials, it could be, um, potentially repairing, um, maintaining those vehicles. It's effectively what a lot of towns would call a contractor yard. It's a space on a property where a, where a business owner keeps and maintains their work equipment. I also agree, uh, with what Mr. Shirley brought up before, um, and, or Derek.
Oh, no, you're not, no, I was surprised someone agreed.
Either way. Um, the, the definition of construction services in your ordinance is a, is a non-exclusive list. It's, um, it is not the model of clarity necessarily, but it gives a couple of examples of types of construction operations that would be included. But just because concrete is not listed there, certainly doesn't mean, um, that the operation of, of concrete construction services on a lot uh, wouldn't qualify. So, we certainly disagree with that, the position that the appellate takes here. We think, um, certainly by what the code officer saw on the property, um, the two large work trucks, um, other smaller work vehicles that go along with that. Um, uh, the concrete materials, specifically, uh, the frames and the molding, uh, that's used, that falls within the scope of, of construction services. This is something that perhaps the board, I'm not sure whether the board needs to address it directly, but there's also the, the issue of the use of the garages. I think it, the CEO's decision, the notice of violation, found that the use of the property, including those, um, including those garages was, uh, within the scope of construction services. But I think, as was already pointed out, both of those large garages were permitted for personal use only, it's on the face of the permit. Um, and so, I think it's important to, to, to point out, um, Attorney Valancourt might be a hundred percent correct, I don't think we have any reason to doubt him on this point, that, um, the primary purpose of those buildings may not be for, uh, housing, construction materials. They may be used for a golf simulator, for recreational materials, for other family functions. But on the face of those permits, um, that, uh, any use of those structures, uh, for construction, um, activities, as something that's outside of, of a personal, family use, simply isn't allowed. Um, so I think it's important for the board, um, to remember that as well. And then finally, Attorney Valancourt sort of, I, I think, uses a, a secondary argument, essentially arguing that construction services could be accessory, um, to the primary, single-family use of, of the lot. And again, I, I don't agree with that characterization at all. Um, I've, I've cited a, a Maine Supreme Judicial Court case, uh, in, in our letter, uh, to highlight this point. But one of the things that's important, um, in determining whether a use can be accessory to another, um, which theoretically would allow, uh, construction services, um, to be, uh, present on this property, um, is not only that it be subordinate, um, but that it be incidental, and typically connected, um, to a particular use. And I think it, it's completely illogical, um, to, to think that, uh, a single-family home on a property, even if it's a large property, would typically also have a construction business operating off of the same site. Those two things typically don't go together. Certainly, people will park, um, you know, uh, pickup trucks, um, or other work vehi-, uh, smaller work vehicles, when they come home, they'll go to the office, or they'll go to a, a construction location. Um, but it's certainly not typical, um, and, and certainly out, far outside the scope of an accessory use, uh, within the town's, um, the town's opinion. Uh, and also something that wouldn't be permitted that way either. Also worth pointing out, although it's, um, perhaps just a, a minor detail, uh, that there are other, there are registrations, particularly the US Department of Transportation, for those work vehicles, those, um, very large work trucks. They list three oh nine Portland Road, um, as the business location. So, I think that's further evidence that, um, the CEO certainly took into consideration in making its decision about whether or not, um, that location was, uh, where the business was operating out of. May contend otherwise, but that's certainly something that went into that point. So, um, I, I guess for all those reasons, again, your job tonight is to see, is to determine whether or not the CEO's decision, the language in your ordinance, uh, actually says is clearly contrary to the specific provisions of the code. Um, uh, and, and we certainly think that that's not the case here. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
I definitely do, but, uh, I have to collect my thoughts and get them into words.
Okay, was there a question that you wanted, uh, to direct to the town? Yeah.
That's what you want me to, uh.
Well, yeah, what was the question that you had?
So, when the, the code enforcement officer.
You want to step to the mic?
To you?
Yeah, please step to the mic, and then we'll ask the question, I mean, I know, I know what's, but it helps maintain some formality and civil.
The same question I already asked, is that what you're saying?
That's the one I think I, I would ask the, the town for you.
Him, or you?
Well, ask the question.
Okay, I, I just want to be on the same page, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we want you, what we want you to do is direct the question to the board, and that way it maintains civility.
So, when the code enforcement officer told me my business was different than the ones that were listed on the construction services that I gave him examples of, that happened across the town, I just assumed it was different.
Okay.
I mean, not saying I think it's different, like, completely, I mean, it's obviously I do construction, it's no, I'm not denying that. It's just, I don't know why it's such an issue, you know what I mean? There's lawyers here, it's just, I got so much other bullshit to deal with. I have five little kids, and you know what I mean? My biggest worry is I'm getting off the school bus, you know? And now I gotta be here at night, worrying about forms sitting in my driveway. Why?
Thank you.
Does it make any sense? I just don't care, you know?
Mr. McCall, is there, I mean, he points out that apparently, allegedly, apparently, somebody told him that there were differences between his property...
As I understand the question, Mr. Chair, the question is, why, if concrete isn't specifically listed under the definition of construction services, why this would qualify? I think the answer to that question is, again, the definition of construction services gives a non-exclusive list. It gives examples. And I think, again...
We know that.
No back-and-forth conversation, please. Okay?
So, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I know, he's sweating. So, just so I understand, when it comes, when it comes to him, like them wanting to do this, and he was told by someone on the town that this is how it is, right? No matter what it says, right? If he, if someone told him, the interpretation of it, isn't the town liable? Or isn't it the town's fault because a worker told this guy that, hey, this is how it is? And now he based what he was told, what the town said, right? Because he was told poor information. So regardless of what it says, even if we can fight about this definition all night, because I like doing that for fun, I just don't understand why, why just, if he was told bad information by the town, how's the town, where's the town picking up that slack? Because if he, I believe he's here, I believe he's here because he was told wrong information, right? I believe that he was told that, hey, this is how it is, based on that one person's, that one person's understanding of the ordinance, or that definition, if I understand correctly. So I guess my question is, even if this ordinance says what it says, if someone told them by a town member, a town employee, someone that pays by the town, told them, hey, this is how it is, and they base it off of that information, we just wipe our hands and say no? Like, how's the town not somewhat responsible or have to give some wiggle room due to the error of the town?
Well, to your point, I haven't heard any allegation that any bad information, misinformation error was made. I think the same, the information given to Mr. Whitney has been the same throughout the entire process, which is that what he's doing on the property constitutes construction services. That's what's in the notice of violation that's subject to appeal.
May I ask Mr. Whitney up to the stand again?
Yes.
Please.
And just be easy, okay?
I'm going easy as I know how. Mr. Whitney?
Yep.
So maybe I misunderstood your question. So maybe just for me, you can make, you heard me right there, right?
Yep.
Did I understand that correctly? You were told by someone from the town a certain thing, regardless of what it is, that's not even pretend it's construction services, and you based what you did off of what they said?
Yeah, I gave him the examples of others. I mean, I'm not supposed to say other people in the town, I guess.
No, no, right.
Yeah, so I gave him examples of the other construction companies I know in the town or listed as construction services for the 50th time. You know, doing things on, you know, I've listed other construction companies in this town that are listed under construction services. Carpentry, you know, excavation, those types of businesses. And I asked him, you know, like, why does a carpenter get to bring his truck and his trailer home? What's the difference if he's parking at his house? Maybe he's not doing any construction services there, but he does construction services. So he just parks it at his house. I told him that example, and that's someone that was doing it. And then I, I'm like, why don't you tell him to leave? And he said, because his is different than mine. So when I gave him an example of someone who's a carpenter, which isn't that listed under construction services? And I told him them, and then he told me, I'm different than them.
So the real issue was, the fact of the matter, you were told you were different maybe because of whatever reason, your vehicles...
Size.
Size.
That's probably why.
Okay, okay.
Not saying that was why, but that's my guess.
Okay. I feel better now because I personally didn't understand your question, but now I feel better understanding your question. Thank you.
Wasn't I supposed to labor?
Oh, you're good. Sorry, that was just from...
We'll just do what the chair tells us to do.
Well, I mean, do you have any, I mean, do you have anything else? I want to give you opportunity in Georgia.
So, yeah.
Wait, wait, guys, wait. Georgia?
Georgia Woodbury. I have a...
Who do you want to ask a question?
I'm not really sure.
And that's okay. We'll walk away if, yeah.
My question is, if I understood the preliminaries, this business was your father's?
Yep.
And this material was all on the premises for a long time before you built these buildings?
It was there before I built my house.
So what about the vehicles? Did he used to have vehicles there?
Well, no, not at that exact residence, but...
Okay, but here in Gray?
Yes.
So how did it become an issue? I guess that's my problem. That's my question. If this business has been there for...
Not on that, it's always been on that location.
Okay.
But it has, it was there previous to the garages, the house. I had the stuff there before I even lived there.
Oh, boy, here comes Todd.
Okay.
No, leave him out of it. He's not part of it.
No, he's not, right, right. But there has been a long family history within the town with pretty minimal vehicles, pretty minimal presence. Yeah, I think that's the main idea.
Okay, I was just, I was wondering if I understood that right.
But it just seems like, I mean, it obviously only came up since I built the garage, you know? Because...
When did your problems start? This is Anthony Gray, ours, a new member to this panel.
When I built the second garage.
The second one? In 2022?
Just, literally just finished it.
Just finished it?
Yeah.
And the first utility garage was built in 2020? So in that three-year period of time, were there any options brought to you from the town? Or did you speak with the town on what your intentions were for your 11-acre property?
Like, if I was going to run it for a business, or?
Just open dialogue with the town and what your intentions are.
Well, I just lived there. That's where my house is.
Okay.
You know, I built a house behind there and I just built the garage. You know, I keep just about everything I own in my garage, you know? That's just what I wanted to do.
You can kind of tell his deal, which is, he just ready to tell you what's going on at every, at any given moment. And I think what probably happened was, because again, I've been through this, we've all been through these construction projects where there's some construction going on and everything gets moved outside for a few weeks, right? Just because it's a...
Yeah, I've built, I've had two houses built in Gray in the past.
Right, so I think that's probably, that's what you explained to me is probably what was going on. But I...
Did you want any more questions or?
I don't have any more questions.
I'm okay.
Have a seat, and we'll finish with the town's presentation. Mr. McCall, thanks for your, thanks.
A point of clarification that was just brought up. Like I mentioned before, the face of both of those building permits for the garages specifically do not allow them to be used for anything other than personal purposes. So it could very well have been the case, and perhaps it was, that when they were under construction, more of the work materials and work equipment were visible from the street. It doesn't mean, it isn't a defense, though, that they're now being stored in those garages because the materials are still on site. And moreover, those garages, part of the building permits that were issued, can't be used for that purpose. So I don't think that solves the issue either. It's possible, the conversation that Mr. Whitney had with the town could have been about potential other uses that this property could qualify for that would allow him to do what he's doing. But it's the town's opinion that there aren't any of those uses available, that this is construction services, and that's simply not allowed in that zone. To Mr. Valancourt's previous point, a rezoning is always a possibility. That has to be approved by, it has to be reviewed and recommended by the planning board and then approved by the town council. That's obviously not why you're here today, but that is, you know, that is an opportunity that still presents itself.
May I?
Yes.
Georgia Woodbury. My question still hasn't really been answered as to how come, if the business has been functioning and he's been parking his trucks, why did it all of a sudden come to a head that we're all here? I haven't figured that one out yet. Why has it been okay and all of a sudden it's not okay?
Well, to answer your question, I think it became apparent in a much shorter timeframe, certainly over a minimum, you know, two to three years that this became an issue. And to be clear, you know, it's not, it's not the, the code officer in many towns, in Gray included, is not, is not trying to go about and find reasons to issue notices of violation right away. The first line of approach is to work with a property owner to see if the issue can be solved. From a legal perspective, that point really doesn't matter. You know, a violation exists if it exists. And so it could have, it could have been in existence theoretically for a number of years and still be a violation today. But it rose to the point where the town felt that it wasn't making any progress in working towards a solution that actually complied with the ordinance. And that's why the notice of violation was issued at this point. And that, for lack of a better explanation, that is why it's here tonight, because that NOB was issued.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for the town? Does the town have any questions they'd like to ask the appellate?
Not at this time, thank you.
Any further questions from the appellate for the town?
I'd like to make just one more very quick point, and that would be that the home occupation, I think, analysis option still exists here. And I urge the board to continue that, to consider that, I should say. I, yeah, again, I'm surprised we're here for all of this, but hey, if that is an option that can get us to where we need to be, that's something we want to keep open for consideration. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I do have a response to that, just for the board help. The town certainly doesn't think that the property could qualify for a home occupation for this use, but that is outside the scope of what the board is tasked with reviewing tonight. The NOV cited the property owner for operating construction services out of the home or off of the property. You know, as with anyone else in Gray, you know, the property owner can work with the code officer to determine whether a home occupation is appropriate. Town doesn't think it is, but there's always the chance for dialogue on that, and that would be a question for the code officer. And of course, if that's denied, then that potentially could come back to you for another round. But the town doesn't believe that the issue of a home occupation is before you. In fact, the Bell case was really cited. The Superior Court looked at a number of different things. And the point that I was most interested in and was trying to convey to the board was whether or not construction services in that scenario could be a proper accessory use for that property. The court ultimately considered and decided that it couldn't be, that it was a principal use. But no home occupation before you tonight, and I think that's an issue for another day.
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
One more comment from this public member. Yeah, I'm gonna make you quit because I know you guys are tired hearing from me, but I'll tell you what. If the town of Gray is not gonna let a father and his son and his cousin drive their trucks out of their property, then there are bigger issues to consider. And I'm just gonna leave it at that. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment? Yes, sir. Step up, state your name.
I'm Todd Whitney. I'm Randy's dad. I've been in this town since 1962. I've heard a lot of this going on tonight, and I was just curious. I'm thinking of myself sitting over there, and I graduated from here in 1980. And we was allowed to carry whatever we wanted for work tools. And why all of a sudden in 2023, we got all this dilemma about a person trying to make a living in this town, to pay their taxes, to raise their kids? I just don't understand how we came to this point from 1980 to 2023. I just haven't got any answers. And it just, it befuddles me to even think that we're even here to talk about my kids. I graduated from Gray. I lived here since 1962. I raised two kids. They both graduated from Gray. And I made a living doing concrete. And now all of a sudden, I expected, I expected the town of Gray, I'm thinking, because I know a lot of people in this town, I used to know everybody. And for a kid that bust his rear end to try to make a living to raise five children, and we're debating whether the kid legally can have work tools on a yard, is blowing my mind. And I think he has a legitimate point when he has his stuff there. I can't even imagine what my response would be in 1980 if somebody approached my yard to tell me that I couldn't have forms there so I could make a living to raise my family in the town of Gray. I pity the person that what I would have to respond to. I am frustrated with the town of Gray. If anything at all, I'm not patting myself on the back for having a magnificent child. I am patting myself on the back because he's made a living and raised my grandchildren. I expected to come here tonight, and I've been listening to this for a long time. I expected the town of Gray to take into consideration who they were talking to and do their research on Mr. Randall Whitney about what he's done to this town. I thought you guys were all gonna beg and plead for forgiveness and say, you know what, Randall? I'll tell you what we'll do. We're gonna rezone your property because you're such a great kid. You've raised children here. You work hard. Working hard seems to be a really bad problem in this day and age.
Calm down.
Well, I'm frustrated.
Let him go, he's fine.
I'm frustrated. And you know what I'm trying to avoid?
You can be frustrated, but not at the top of your lungs.
What I'm trying to avoid, what I'm trying to avoid here is the ultimate decision from the town of Gray to tell him he's got to move his panels. What I'm trying to avoid is somebody to tell him he's gonna move his panels. That day, you guys do not want to seek out. I'm begging you to understand and just try to hear us out and try to make a normal, humane decision and try to think about everything else except the legal aspects of it. That's all I'm saying. I'm not mad, I'm frustrated. And it just perturbs me as a father, for somebody who's worked so hard for the town of Gray and gave so much back to the town of Gray, that I would have thought that somebody here would have just gone down and said to the kid, you know what, we have an issue, but let's see if we can get a zoning done. You put a lot of money in there, you got a beautiful house, you got a, everything's there, you know what I mean? Why do we not want people like this in your town of Gray? You guys are gonna drive people out of here. And like we said before, if we come down to the decision, we're not arguing that concrete is not a construction service. Obviously, we're not idiots. Everything to build a house and anything to build the Empire State Building is a construction service. No kidding. But I will tell you one thing. If that decision ever comes fire, I will spend the entire rest of my life taking a picture of every single truck in this town, and I will present it if it costs me a million dollars. And that business better not ever be moved until those businesses became before us are taken care of. That you can take to the bank, and I appreciate your time from every single one of you.
Does anybody have anything else?
I have one more thing to say.
Okay.
I just want, I don't, he left, he left. I appreciate that gentleman's testimony. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now, all that being said, is there a motion on the floor?
Do we open for discussion first or no?
I have to have a motion. Motion, second, then discussion.
Yeah, I motion.
For?
Discussion?
Okay, we need a motion, we need an affirmative motion.
Okay.
To either grant the appeal or uphold the decision of the code enforcement office.
Okay. May I?
Yes.
Okay, Georgia Woodbury. I move that we grant Randall Whitney and Jamie McKinnon the administrative appeal of a notice of violation regarding prohibiting a construction services youth, use as established in the town of Gray zoning ordinance, chapter 402, on their property in a medium density zoning district at 309 Portland Road, Gray tax map 069-041-029-001.
I second that.
Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
We need to discuss something.
Did you want to start?
No, just.
As I stated earlier, this is certainly a difficult situation and one of highly, highly emotionally fraught. The question before the board is should we grant the appeal by the motion? And the most difficult part is that the town's ordinance, authorized by the statutes of the state, basically reads, as I said earlier, that the purpose of an administrative appeal, which this is, is to hear and decide where it's alleged there's an error in any order required decision or determination by the code enforcement officer of this ordinance. And the ordinance is one that prohibits construction services in the medium density zone. I certainly agree that even in my youth, my father drove a truck home and parked it in the yard and because it wasn't there, it was a truck. But I haven't, as emotional as it be in regard, and honestly, regardless of when the violation was noticed, it may have been a long time because nobody ever paid any attention, you drive by, you know, 309 Portland Road, you see a couple of barns there, nicely kept property, you know, no big deal. And then somebody applied for a permit and the code enforcement officer went onto the property to inspect the building being constructed of the permit that was granted and noticed equipment related to a concrete business that triggered, oh, this is, this is a violation. And we hadn't noticed it before because we never had a reason to be on the property before. It's not whether it's a citizen generated complaint or the neighbors complained about noise or access, it's a situation where I've got to go on the property, inspect the building for the permit that was issued to make sure it's in compliance and, oh, look at all this other stuff that's here, a couple of trucks, a number of forms used to pour concrete foundations or other types of structures and construction services, which the town has identified, isn't allowed here. So a notice of violation was issued. I don't see where the code enforcement officer aired in the notice of violation that was issued. Was it timely? If it's related to the time that the code enforcement officer was required to go on the property, it seems very, quite timely to that, that need to go on the property and inspect the, inspect the construction. I, I know it's, it's difficult, but that's, and you hate to, there are other avenues that could be pursued, be it a contract zone with the town council, be it through the court system. But I, I just don't see where the, as ugly as it may be, I don't see where the code enforcement officer aired in the issue of violation.
I agree with that, but I, I don't know.
May I ask a question to him?
Yes.
Sorry, I forgot your name and I apologize. So if they, I kind of lost my train of thought for a second. It'll come to me one second. Is ordinance, I know ordinance is based basically off the state statute, right?
The comprehensive plan, but it has to be all in accordance with state statute.
Correct. So is there, I mean, is there a time ever in the legal world where an ordinance can just be essentially? I just don't understand, I, I, I'm starting to struggle with, you know, just does seem like, I, I've been here for what, how long now? This is the thickest piece of work paperwork I ever gotten for one of these things so far. And I'm, I'm just really starting to think, like, you know, we're, we're enforcing because his vehicles are there, right? That, that, that's what, that's the issue. This, the code enforcement came, they saw vehicles.
And forms.
And forms, because that's what the guy does. So let me ask this question. If they were lobster traps, would that make a difference? If they were, if they were maybe any other thing but giant, because frankly, let's be real, I actually had a similar situation about this kind of, but not with concrete. Who is gonna move those forms if they don't? Honest to God? Who's gonna move them? We're gonna then pay the town and go make like, good luck with that? Do you know anything about concrete? Because I don't. So my big thing is, like, if we're, if, here's how I look at it essentially, you know, this guy basically nicely told us he was gonna sue us and now if we break the law, we're gonna get sued. So I think I'd rather get sued by helping the, the person personally. But because, you know, if we're saying that we're, I, I'm actually done now. You can just go back and zone now. I just don't understand that, why like, why we're here for all of this. Because you're right, because if he's been in business for that long, even if it's not there, it's like, come on. It's like, it's, it's really starting to, it is starting to, because it's like, I, I don't understand, because like you said, your dad, your dad got to park his truck and hit your yard. Granted, it's not at 1980 no more, I get that. Never will be 1980 again. But we have to think about the real, I do believe in people and not parties. You know, well, you know, this is a, this is a human being whose, you know, family's been here longer than me, so, you know, if, if we are saying the town gets to pick and choose whose vehicle is on what property just based on their business, I'm not gonna lie, I'd probably do the same thing that Whitney Junior would do, Whitney Senior would do. Take a picture of everyone and report it to you guys, I feel that. So my thing is, at what point will the town of Gray put the people first over amounts of legal paper? You know, I, I just, I understand, we're, we're reading out a definition and, okay, cool, it's not any of this, cool. So, yeah, you're right. At what point does someone paying their taxes to the city, town take into some consideration? I mean, I know it doesn't really matter realistically, sure, but man, this is, this is weird times. Because, you know, I'm not even from around here, but, you know, I understand family values and cores and characteristics of the town. Shit, we talk about, sorry, sorry, sorry. Shoot, we talk about characteristics of the town all the time, this guy helped build the characteristics. Right? I mean, he's been here since 1960, that guy's part of the characteristics of the town. So it's like, why are we, you know, I don't know, I'm just yammering at this point, that's when they, you know, I just.
Is there any other discussion?
I definitely support Derek and his point of view that I'm kind of a little beside myself that we've gotten to this point considering the first permit was pulled in 2020, so three years later. I would like from this point on, moving forward, I would like to see the town working with people that are developing businesses and growing their business. So I, I completely appreciate the situation that Mr. Whitney is in. I wish there was some communication and some dialogue back and forth between Mr. Whitney, his intentions, his, his vision for his company and for his family. So I can appreciate the, the emotions involved and the time and obviously a lifetime of, of working in the, in the construction industry. I definitely support Derek's view here where people do need to start coming first. I'm really curious how we came, we got to this point after three years of Mr. Whitney developing his 11 acres.
I don't think it was three years, I think it was the day that the code enforcement officer, within the last, what, couple of months?
Yeah, this is the first time.
Went onto the property to do an inspection. He said, oh, oh, I'm here to do an inspection for this, but look at this, all this over here. That's the violation that was determined only within
Yeah.
the very short period of time. So the question again.
So where, where I stand right now is I understand the violation. I'm in support of the violation. But I really think that this town and people in general, if you get town lines, we need to start communicating, discussing options and laying out what's on the table, what, what's available for you. In my mind, I don't have a lot of experience in this stuff, but it's unbelievable that a portion of an 11 acre property can't be rezoned. So that's where I stand on it, that's where I stand on it.
No comments from the public, please. That, that part is over. We can certainly make and write a memo, the board can certainly write a memo to the town council expressing our thoughts and desires on, on that. We can meet with the town council in a workshop to discuss this as a, as a problem that appears to be wearing its ugly head.
Yeah.
And make changes that way. But tonight, as, as bad as it is, I mean, we really have to determine, is there a, did the code enforcement officer violate the ordinance? By issuing a violation? Or, or not?
So can I say one more thing? I just want, I mean, okay, so it's like, I'm, I'm just gonna be blunt, so hold on to your hats. So I understand there's a violation, I understand the violation, I don't care about the violation.
But we need to. Well, okay, I'm gonna jump in just at this point, again, I'm.
No, no, folks.
I am entitled to advise my client. I'm not testifying, I'm advising my client, Mr. Valencourt.
Mr. Valencourt. Mr. Valencourt. If you're gonna mutter, please mutter under your breath so everybody can hear it. Thank you.
I think the tough part for this board, or any board, is that you're an administrative board and, and your job is to enforce, to interpret, to work with the ordinances that are passed by the town. You can't make up the ordinances, you have to deal with the one that you have in force. And so I, you know, we all appreciate that. But when you take a look at what your job is tonight, the chair's read it, but I'll just go through it one more time. Administrative appeals, to hear and decide where it is alleged that there's an error in any order, requirement, decision or determination by the code enforcement officer in the enforcement of this ordinance. The actions of the code enforcement officer may be modified or reversed by this board of appeals by the concurring vote of at least three members of the board. Decisions of the code enforcement officer may be reversed only upon a finding that the decision is clearly contrary to specific provisions of this ordinance.
So if I still don't go, if I still don't care, does that lady arrest me?
Derek, that's out of order.
Oh, my bad.
You are out of order, totally.
Sorry, I mean, it just seems ridiculous.
See, is there any more discussion?
No, not, not if we can go to the town council on zoning, that would.
All those in favor of the motion to grant the appeal? All those opposed to the motion to grant the appeal? The motion is denied, the appeal has not been granted. You have the right to approach the town council for contract zone, you have the right to go to Superior Court if you wish to appeal.
Mr. Chair, could we have a positive motion?
That was. The motion was to grant.
Well, okay.
The appeal.
Maybe, can we have a, can we have a motion in the affirmative and that would be the other side to deny the appeal, to affirm the decision of the CEO?
We can do that. I mean, that's what I think we, I wanted that, intended that to be a positive motion anyway.
Right, a positive motion.
Okay, do you want to withdraw your motion?
No, you can just.
Okay, a second motion?
That's fine.
I'll make a second motion that we affirm the decision of the code enforcement officer in the 309 Portland Road appeal. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion. The affirmative motion such as this that actually sets forth better the opportunity for the appellate to appeal our decision and make it easier on that, on that end. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed?
All those in favor.
Unanimous on that motion?
There's a written, is a requirement that the, the board adopt findings of fact and conclusions of law, a written decision and issue that within seven days. Do you want me to draft a written decision for you to review and you can have a meeting next Wednesday to take a look at it?
We need to do it within seven days, so I'd like to, if we can, draft the motion prior to that so that we can have it out on the seventh day.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And I know that probably pushes your timeline a little bit, but if you could have that done by Monday for review, that would be good. And then we can get it out within the seven day period so as to not delay any further actions that the what you just want to take.
I'll send that out to you in time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there any other business before the board tonight? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved it. Georgia Woodbury, I moved that we adjourn.
Second? Anybody? I'll second.
Oh, I'll second, sorry, sorry.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous, we are adjourned.